I call this meeting to order. This is the regular school board meeting of the Northfield Public Schools. It is Monday, April 22nd, 2013. Dr. Richardson, there were a couple items in our table file.
Yes, and one of them simply is just a tweak in the information that we provided to you on the resolution for termination nonrenewable probationary licensed staff. We just had a minor glitch there in terms of the dates, not on the resolution, but on the description where it needed to say 2012-13 rather than 2013-14. And then we have several personnel appointments going forward.
Very good. If there's no objection, we will add this to the agenda as we move forward. All right. We will move on to public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the community to address the board. Is there anybody here who wishes to address the board? All right. We will move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packets the minutes from the last school board meeting, which was held on April 8th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Carrie, second. Seconded by Ann. Any discussion? Those in favor of approving the minutes as is, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. All right. Announcements and recognition.
Okay, we have a couple of items from this evening. First of all, some good news from Greenville Park. Audrey Green and the physical education teacher, Mary Wojcik, wrote a grant for Adventure Capital through the Fuel Up to Play 60 to design a new breakfast lunch tray with pictures of healthy fruits, veggies, activity information, fun facts. Audrey was one of eight finalists from across the nation for this competition. She had a phone interview as the last step of the process. Obviously, what a great feat for a fourth grader to be one of eight in the country. Greenville Park also was once again invited to attend the Fuel Up to Play 60 training camp at the Mall of America Field on April 30th. Five students will be attending along with program advisor, Mary Wojcik, and the nutrition specialist, C.C. Green. Students advisors will spend the day learning about nutrition, participating in physical activities, getting a behind-the-scenes look at Vikings locker room. Should be interesting. Bridgewater was also invited to attend. Greenville Park has been invited because of hard work and effort they have put forth in fostering good, healthy eating habits along with the creative physical activity programs. Also would like to announce that Northfield High School Activities Director, Tom Groutmann, has been elected to serve on the Minnesota State High School League Board of Directors. This is a four-year term, which begins in August. So again, congratulations to Tom. Also would like to announce that Northfield Public Schools is one of 31 organizations that will be receiving books for early childhood screening in the summer reading program, and ours is under the Bountiful Book Program. So again, we've had, I think we have had a really great relationship with SMF over the years in terms of the ability not only to work with a number of grants, but also the programming with early childhood education. And I think we're seen really as a model for a lot of school districts across the state in terms of providing support for early childhood students.
Great.
So that's all I have.
All right. Board members, other announcements or recognition? All right. Well, ready to move on to our first item for discussion report, which is the Bridgewater Professional Learning Community. And board members, you had on your table file a PowerPoint presentation. So Nancy, are you presenting?
I'm not presenting, but I'm introducing.
All right.
So first of all, Happy Earth Day. It's a nice day to recognize our-
Can't see the earth, but it's good.
Can't see it, but it has a little coating. Obviously, our PLC has been absolutely a wonderful opportunity for all of our teachers. I think they've done a fabulous job of taking this program from its infancy to where it is now. And each year, we try to get a different grade level to present to the school board so you can get a different flavor for what is taking place in the building. So tonight, our second grade team will be presenting. Our second grade team consists of Sherri Schwab, Lindsay Downs, Maryn Born, and Darren Lofquist, and they'll be presenting what they're working on in their second grade PLC. So without any further ado, I'd like to present Sherri Schwab.
All right. Back in September, our PLC team started to look at our data, and this is what our reality was in the fall. Our evidence showed that 30% of students in second grade did not meet the DIBELS Fall Benchmark for fluency, which was 52 words per minute. And the DIBELS is a form of assessment that we use to focus on early literacy skills for our students.
And you may be asking yourself why fluency is such an important skill for students to have. And as a reader reads the text, it's important that he/she is able to efficiently decode the words that they read, as well as comprehend the individual words and complete phrases and sentences that they encounter while they're reading. And he/she must stop at each word and spend time trying to pronounce it. When that happens, they're unable to develop an overall understanding of the text. When students start school, when they're young in kindergarten, that's mainly how they start reading. They start by decoding words. When they get to second grade, you have a lot of students that have already mastered that. However, you still do have students that are working on the decoding process. So it's important to make sure that those students that are still really working on all the decoding are up to speed so that they can comprehend what they're reading. Otherwise, if they have to spend time decoding what they're working on, it makes all the sentences chopped up, and when they get chopped up, it lowers their level of comprehension.
So with this information, we created our SMART goal. We decided that we would increase the rate of reading fluency so that 80% of students would demonstrate 72 words, which is actually the winter goal. 52 words per minute was the fall goal. So we worked towards the winter goal. 72 words per minute as measured by the DIBELS Progress Monitoring Assessment.
I'm Lindsay Downs. And so with that, with our whole group instruction, which would be considered Tier One, within our own classrooms, we differentiate our instruction by holding guided reading groups as well as individual reading conferences. We also analyze and learn about poems. We talk about reading and learn about reading comprehension strategies and also readers' theater within our classrooms.
And it's important to note when we do Tier Two, we're still doing Tier One instruction within our rooms, but we're just expanding it by implementing Tier Two instruction. When we do Tier Two instruction, we place students into appropriate flex groups within our four classrooms based on their reading levels and also their DIBELS test scores, which was how many words they can read per minute. And the instruction in these groups were tailored specifically to the needs of the students that were in each specific group. We have some following slides and videos, and we're going to show you examples and levels of each. This is the first one here, and these are all students that were in my flexible group, and they're doing a readers' theater. They all came into second grade well above the beginning of the year benchmark of 52 words per minute. Some of them were even above 100 words per minute in their reading at the beginning of second grade. So some things we worked on were, as I was reading with them, I noticed that their reading wasn't very phrased, and they kind of had a flat tone as they were reading through. So we worked on really making sure that they were reading with expression, acting like the characters do in the books that they read. And we did this multiple ways by doing partner reading, poems, and readers' theater. And this is just an example of one here. I'm going to stop them every now and then during this video because just to remind them of some practices and things that they should be working on. This is Aiden, Julia, Ella, Anna, Jack, reading the readers' theater script, Jessica Loves Soccer. Before reading as a group, they practiced making their voices sound just like the characters would sound and using expression and projection. I'll say go, and then first reader needs to start. Ready, set, go. Stop. Aiden, I want you to say that line one- So right here, I stopped them because he read his line pretty flat. He needed to have more emphasis on that as he's acting kind of like a bully to the other readers in there. More time. Use your projection and really emphasize it a little more, okay? Ready, set, go. Perfect. And so as this goes on, every now and then, as they're practicing this skill, I will stop them and just give them reminders of how they should be reading. But that's one example of what we worked on in the higher flex groups for students that had already met that benchmark that needed some enrichment.
So I worked with students who fell into the high-risk category within our DIBELS assessment. So these students really needed more of a really good core phonics instruction, phonics word work, and a lot of high-frequency work. So the next video that I'll be showing you actually is just one example of what we did. It's called One Breath Boxes, and here's just some information on the One Breath Boxes. It was one of their favorites. Students are given a list of high-frequency words. The student takes one deep breath and tries to read all the words in a box. The number of words in the box increases in each box, and the words become more challenging as they move from left to right on the page. Students work in partners. They face each other, and they monitor each other. And the goal is mastery and easy recall of high-frequency words. The example, usually typically what we do is we're in a circle. We have an inner circle and an outer circle. And it got really loud, and the video wasn't working. I wasn't able to. I wanted you to get a good snapshot of what it really looks like. So I have two girls that are practicing. And it took a few takes, too, because then they were a little bit shy because they're not your strong readers, so... But they did great, so. So you'll notice that she did actually get further each time. It's hard to tell, but she did get a couple words at least each time, so that's the goal. All right. I did something called the duet reading intervention, which was one-on-one with one of my students in my class. And so I would just pull the student out for about five minutes, and we had four different steps that we went through. The first reading is where the student would read the passage aloud. It was a brand-new passage. They'd never seen it before. The teacher provides immediate standard error correction, so if there's tricky words, I would help them out with those words. The second reading was where the teacher and student would take turns reading every other word. The teacher would start first in the passage. The third reading is very similar to the second. Again, the teacher and student take turns reading every other word, but this time the student would go first. And the final reading is where the student reads the entire passage out loud, focusing on their fluency and accuracy skills. And I'm going to show you just the end clip of my mind. It's about six minutes long, so we're going to skip through to the end, so you'll see the third reading and the final reading. Yeah, we had some technical difficulties, but this was showing the first reading, his cold reading, where he's never seen the passage before. But after I get through all four steps, I would graph and track and monitor his progress so then he could see how he was doing and stuff, too. And next, Mira's going to show another intervention that she did in her classroom.
Okay. This one is called the pencil tap. And a lot like Sherri's, they have three tries or three times that they read a passage, and the first one is a cold read. And each time that the student makes an error, skips through a word, I tap the pencil, which gives them like a reminder to stop. And then if it's a word that's tricky, I give them the word, repeat it back, and have them repeat it back to me. They start back at the beginning of the sentence each time that there's an error. And like Sherri said, that she graphed it, the most exciting part of this intervention was the graph because I would have it with the student. And at the beginning, the first read, she would read, and I think at the beginning, when she first started it, she had like 10 errors pretty consistently for the cold read. And then right away, the next time, you know, once we've been through it once, she would already have maybe only seven or eight. And then she would watch the number go further down and further down, and she was just so proud of herself. So the graph was the best part. But I'll just show you a little piece of it here. Well... Listen. Okay. Thank you. And it goes on like that. And don't be alarmed that it's a Sharpie marker and not a pencil because that would also be the most stressful part of the intervention because I rarely had a pencil in my hands. But it was just the audio it worked with.
Okay, so our SMART goal follow-up. We were really happy to see that with our December progress monitoring results, 78% of second graders met the mid-year benchmark for fluency, which is in January. So with that information, we identified a subset of children that needed an additional, more intensive intervention due to reading difficulties. And these students received an additional one-half hour of instruction outside of Core and Title I instruction focusing on phonics skills. And I do have a short video to show, to end our presentation, of a student who is participating in this type of an intervention. And he's really excited because he passes his goal, so. I should mention that it was timed, so that's why he was, you know, distressed. You could just see it. But what a great ending, though. And now we'd like to open up for questions.
Board members, questions? John?
Occasionally on these elementary school PLCs, one of the concerns we've heard is integrating the Companeros classroom with the other classrooms. Has that been an issue for you in this part of the PLC at all, or is it something that you've been able to do a lot?
I think it hasn't really been an issue. It's allowed us to differentiate within reading a little bit more than we might be able to. This year in Companeros, the group, there's not a huge range in the group of kids, so a lot of them get to leave during that time, which I always think is really beneficial to get instruction from another teacher in another way. And also, a lot of these practices that we have all learned to do this year, we can do it for their Spanish reading to better than the Spanish readers. So does that answer your question?
Thank you.
No?
I teach at the Companeros.
This was exciting to watch. It's really inspiring to see this. Is the technique used here shared with the parents, so they might be to use the same technique when they would read to their children?
In any cases, yes.
That's good. Thank you.
Carrie?
Great presentation. Just great. And I really like seeing the, you know, actually seeing the interventions and seeing them being done. My question is, you divide up into four groups, and it looks like you had a larger group, and I couldn't really tell how big the groups were in the other three. You know, I mean, obviously, you're working one-on-one, but can you just kind of give us a sense of how the students divide up? And when you're doing those one-on-one, what the other kids are doing in that grouping?
I can talk about my one-on-one. I had my base class with me, so what they were doing during that time was just their language arts block. They were reading with their book boxes at their own levels. So I would just quietly pull that student out. So that's why you kind of, I had to be fairly quiet because other kids are reading and stuff around me. So that's what happened when I just pulled that one student out from my classroom. And then in reference to the flexible grouping, I had the struggling readers, so I did have a lower amount of students, I think 17, which is still a lot to have for one teacher, but we used Accelerate Northfield. And I think I always had at least four people, including myself, to work with students. So sometimes we would do small groups stationed. Usually, it started with a mini lesson, and then we'd go off and work in smaller groups. So it really worked out well. That's been a really nice program for us this year.
Are the Accelerate Northfield volunteers then, are they trained in these different interventions as well?
Yes, and we train them. We have this fabulous, I'm not sure who came up with the, there's a bin with all the different reading strategies that we teach as a district, and it very specifically explains what they need to do for each intervention, and we just hand it to them and say, "Read it." And if you have questions, touch base with me. And then, of course, we check around, you know, with the volunteers as the lesson goes on. Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions? Julie?
Well, I agree with Carrie. It was really, really so well done, and I just love the way that you demonstrated the range of abilities that you have in any given classroom, and it was particularly exciting. I don't think in any other presentation we've seen the enrichment piece where you're addressing, really moving kids beyond where they are. They've already exceeded, but you're able to move them even further, and I thought that was really exciting, so. Very well done.
Rob?
I was just wondering, because I went over to Bridgewater in December, and I watched Hope and Connie do these interventions as the RTI coaches. And I'm interested in the transition from having specifically trained coaches doing these things to having every teacher trained in it and how that transition has gone and how people feel that they've been supported through the whole process.
Right at the beginning of the year, when we identified the kids that needed the intervention, Hope and Connie had a lot of great ideas as to what interventions to offer. So what they actually did is they came to our classrooms, and they trained us as the teachers on how to implement each one. So for example, with one of my girls, she's doing the duet reading that you watched Sherri do with one of her children. Connie Nelson came to my classroom, modeled the whole entire thing for me, and then had me practice it and critiqued me. And she will come to my room about once a month or once every two months and actually do progress checks just to make sure they're still implementing the intervention correctly and they're still taking down all of the data correctly for that student. Does that answer your question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, fantastic.
And then the other question I had was just, I mean, this is focusing on fluency of reading. I'm wondering where the actual comprehension of reading part comes in, where you actually understand what you're reading so fluently.
Well, I think most of it is if you're stopping to decode words, that's breaking apart each sentence. So if you're trying to read a sentence, but you have to stop in a book five times, it's hard to focus on two things at once. So if you're able to fluently read, then you're going to be able to understand more of what you read because then you don't have to stop all the time, and you get the whole message. You can focus on understanding the actual content of the book, too.
Okay. So are there like sometimes follow-up questions, like what, were you asked what was happening in this thing that you just read?
Yeah, we have those, and that'd just be a different skill that we'd be focusing on with a specific student or a specific group of kids at that time, too. Yep, guided reading, individual conferences and all of that, so, yeah.
Other questions? No?
Anybody my age who went to a rural school would recognize this technique immediately. Only they had about two or three kids at that table and probably seven or eight in the rest of the village.
It was one of the larger classrooms, right?
Well, I think if I remember correctly.
Any other questions? Comments?
Well, I really want to thank you. I think it's exciting, Nancy, that you brought the second grade PLC because we hear so much about the importance of reading by third grade. So to see these interventions and to hear about the progress that's happening and that you're all able to do it within your PLC. And thanks, Hope, too, for being, staying back there. So congratulations. I think this is terrific, and it's really wonderful to see how quickly the RTI interventions are helping the kids, so, thanks.
I just think it's good for you to see the culmination of some of the different programs that we have started within the district, to see where the teachers are at with RTI and what it actually means for each individual student is really important. And also to hear what Accelerate Northfield, the benefits of that program have brought to our classrooms as well. So, and I know that in the newspaper last Saturday, Heather Kohanka did a nice job of putting an article together on a foster grandparent program, and these teachers also utilize the foster grandmas who are in our building. So it's that whole village that it takes to raise a child, and we're using every bit of that village, and we're so appreciative for each part that we have. So it's a wonderful culmination, but it's nice for you to see all the different things that do come together to make a difference for each individual child. So thank you for this opportunity today. I'd like to thank my second grade team because without them, this doesn't happen. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I really enjoyed it.
I think the real advantage, too, that you see with this is you see the impact also of how flexible grouping works in conjunction with RTI to really make these things happen. Because for the flexible grouping, as you remember, we wanted to try to make sure we could meet the needs of kids wherever they were. And where Darren was able to talk to us about what he was doing with the flexible group that was on the upper end so that they actually got a set of skills that were kind of above and beyond. And on the other end, where we needed more support because the students were at risk, we had a way to address that, too. It really is, I think, seeing the confluence of PLCs, RTI, flex grouping, and volunteer programming in our district as to the power it has when those pieces come together. And the power, I think, of having a coaching model, again with Hope and Connie at Bridgewater and with the other coaches at the other buildings, because what we know is to really make this happen, it does take that initial piece where the coach really coaches you through the process, lets you practice it, critiques you, and then checks every once in a while to make sure that you're continuing to implement with integrity. Those are the pieces it takes to really put this thing together. And I appreciate the work that you guys are doing, especially the work of our coaches. And Mary is our coach ringmaster. Okay. Thank you.
All right. You're ready to move on to our second item, which is a report. And I think Pam's ready to give us on the child nutrition budget.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Pam Hopton. I'm the Child Nutrition Director, and I've been getting a lot of, let's see, helpful suggestions about providing snacks at meetings, so I tried to take those into serious consideration. So, I tried to take those into serious consideration.
Who suggested that, Pam?
Well, I'm not going to say. It remains nameless. But anyways, these are some of our best-selling à la carte products. So, if you've been away from à la carte or high school, or high school cafeteria, and you've just read about competitive foods and all the articles in the paper, these are actually some of our best-selling à la carte products. So, I'm just going to hand these to Matt real quick.
Can you bring them to anyone else?
Well, anybody, yeah, they're available to anyone. So, anyway, I thought I would get started with, you know, it's been, it's actually been a great year for us. And we're going to hit some of the highlights of that year, and also talk about next year's budget and some great things we have planned for that. But before we do that, you know, there certainly has been, I don't know if you'd say a firestorm, but a lot of media attention about the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act in several districts. You know, the changes haven't gone over that well, unfortunately, because they're fantastic changes. I think one of the things that has really been critical to our success is just when the proposed rule was in proposal form, we really started to implement the changes along the way. So, it was much more subtle, I think, here. But, you know, that's just my opinion. But I thought we'd start out. I just wanted to show you, like, I have my iPad as well. These guys are all using their iPad. And just taking some pictures when I'm out at the schools of a lunch, so you can get an idea of a mainline lunch choice. Because certainly, a lot has been in the media about not enough food, and, you know, my kids are starving. And, you know, a lot of things like that are being said. Again, the whole goal of the new regulations is really to get all students at all age level to eat half of their lunch tray, fruits and vegetables, fresh fruits and vegetables. So, they still have the other components. And this has been a great lunch menu for us, as always. And the weather, you know, plays right into this, because what's better than a grilled cheese on whole grain bread and a healthy choice tomato soup on a day like today? We didn't have this today. But as you can see, you know, there's just a wide variety of, and they can have basically unlimited fruits and vegetables at every grade level. Now, I know, people always want to push the envelope. So, you know, my first grader can have four apples or something. If your first grader is going to eat them, then we would encourage them to do that. And, you know, most first graders wouldn't be capable of eating four apples during lunch. But maybe if you're a junior in high school or something, you could actually do that. So, anyway, just, I couldn't even fit the milk on here. And there's also dried in the bag where it says SNAP. That's a dried apple crisp product. It's all hundred percent apple, no sugar added, just a dried fruit option. So, I just wanted to take you quickly through. This has been one of the biggest successes at the high school this year. We have a build-your-own entree salad option, choice. And, you know, it's fantastic. I mean, the kids love it, the adults love it. It's very popular. We've gone from selling about fifty entree salads a day to one hundred and seventy-five or eighty. So, three times as many salads. You can pick between romaine or spinach, or have a blend of each. We give you the protein source item that you choose, which could be turkey, or chicken, or beef for a taco salad. And then, basically, you put as many vegetables as you want on it, all the ones that you personally like. We also have a specialty salad of the day, so you could choose that. And usually, that's on display, like turkey cranberry and strawberry chicken, and, you know, just taco salad, popular salads that are entree choices of the day, with a whole grain breadstick. And again, two fruit selections, and I just picked any random fruit selections. And I picked an apple, and then the pineapple in extra late syrup, and then a chocolate milk. And then, a build-your-own sub sandwich and/or wrap. So, you can get a variety of wraps or a sub sandwich. Now, again, with our sub sandwich, if you look at the size, the size went down, because we could only have two breads per serving, even at the high school level. So, the size of the bread actually did go down a little bit. But it certainly did not impact the amount of vegetables that you can put on your sandwich, or the amount of protein source meat or cheese. So, and again, with, in this particular selection, it's all cold veggies. But you could have, a student could have hot veggies and cold veggies, all cold, and again, with the two fruits. So, I just wanted to give you an idea about some of how the lunch trays actually look. The Healthy Snack Cart option is something that we piloted at Greenville Park two years ago, and went over with such success that we actually moved it out to the other elementary schools based on parent requests. And what it is, is it's actually a service to parents who don't have to think about one more thing, like picking snack, and, you know, fluttering out of the house, and forgetting, and then feeling badly all day. So, it's really a great program. And if you, I don't know if you can actually see, but in the top, there's like bags, celery sticks, carrots in the bag. There's grapefruit bagged up, strawberries, bananas, apples, raisins, all on the top shelf. And then, as you go down, small bags of pretzels, animal crackers, and then corn nuts, some sunflower seeds, and graham crackers. So, again, kids get to select the snack that they want every single day, you know, one snack per day. Usually, it's tied in with milk break, if the school does milk break. If the school doesn't do milk break, then the teacher sets a time for the snack, and they can select their snack every day. And I'm going to talk in a minute about how many people are participating in the Healthy Snack Cart option. So, anyways, I just want to start out by updating you on last year's goals. Again, we launched the Healthy Snack Carts at the other elementary schools, and will continue to have that program. I think a lot of parents appreciate the fact that we offer the program. We have, at this time, five hundred and sixty-eight students participating at all three of our schools, simply as the highest participation in the snack cart, but closely followed by Bridgewater and Greenville Park. So, that was one of our goals from last year. The Healthier U.S. School Challenge, we submitted our application to the USDA at the end of last year. And then, we found out in August that we would be awarded the Silver Award at all three elementary schools. And again, this is a voluntary program. You have to, you know, send in, it's very governmental. You have to send in a large binder of all your school lunch menus, and your production records, and all of your PE curriculum, and your health curriculum for every grade level. So, we feel very honored that we were chosen to receive the Silver Award for all three of the schools. Last year, for the first year, Child Nutrition actually participated in all the active school events. You know, it's one of those things, you don't know what you don't know. I didn't even realize that at some of the schools, we weren't, we didn't have a present at those, a presence at those events. And so, we did change that up. And again, it's a great opportunity for us to get out in front of parents, to have the Healthy Snack Cart there, to have the educational benefits forms, to answer any questions, and we will continue to do that, to collect payments on lunch accounts, and to look up balances, and just a lot of great implications as far as the iPad is concerned, too. We did launch, just at the March and April timeframe, two recipes from Jeff Leboe, the executive chef at The Depot. And Jeff has created some actually school recipes that were, actually, one of them, the turkey pot pies, was very popular. We just had that on last week's menu, and the kids are like, "Can you have that again?" So, they want that back. They like the way that tastes. And then, we did a special wrap that he created down in the sub area at the high school. The menu certification process, again, our menus, it was a one-time part of the new legislation that we actually had to go through a menu certification process with the Department of Education. They had a lot of Excel spreadsheets that had formulas, and you would put in your menus, and then it would, you know, show up in red if it wasn't correct, and if it was black, it was fine. And we went through that process, and then we were eligible, and have been eligible all school year, to receive the additional six cents per every meal that we serve from October first, which was the first time that you could be eligible to receive that. And then, again, just with the implementation of the new federal regulations, we're excited about our opportunity to offer pretty much unlimited fresh, frozen, dried fruits and vegetables at all age levels. And one of the things that we've really tried to do to that end is try to put those as close to the front of the serving line as possible, so that when you're super hungry, and that you're first in line in the lunch line, you know, you're automatically seeing a wide variety of bright colored fruits and vegetables that just makes you want to select those items. All right, moving into the budget overview for thirteen fourteen. One of the things, we have the good fortune of having a fund balance, and we are on track to end this year, not at a break even, but with a positive fund balance as well. And one of the things that we want to do is try to spend on, because we're required to have three months' worth of operating expenditures on hand in our fund balance to plan for any kind of unforeseen emergency type situation. So, what we want to try to do in the spending down of our fund balance is, I call it like a home remodel type thing at the high school cafeteria area. We are contracted with a kitchen designer, who is actually going to be on site this Thursday again, reviewing actually our lines of service. And then, we're going to discuss what we could do to that area to give it a more modern, updated, easier flow, less traffic congestion, and address some of the issues that we face, and just more exciting for the kids. Give us, we have nice serving equipment, thankfully, so it's not a huge investment in serving equipment as much as a facelift. Like, if you're at home and you decided to put new counter caps in that were really great looking, so you can enjoy your meals with your family, that much more. The second point, that we do have a proposed meal price increase of fifteen cents for all lunch meal price categories, except reduced price meals, which are set by the USDA, which was part of our three-year plan two years ago. Because of the Meal Price Equity Calculator, that's part of the Healthy Hunger Free School Lunch Act, every school district is required to increase their paid meal price to a certain level that the government has a formula to calculate. And it's right around two fifty, which is what our proposed price would be. That, and again, so I am, you know, that's my proposal for next year. We would leave breakfast price the same, because we're not required to change that. And the other thing about breakfast is we've been able to see a nice upswing in our breakfast participation for the number of students eating breakfast, and just having breakfast accessible to everybody at the high school. And we really do not want to see any kind of change in that trend. We have some equipment purchases planned for about forty thousand dollars. Again, nothing super exciting, but hot holding carts and things that are needed at each kitchen, melt coolers to keep all of our products, obviously, safe and at the right temperature. There's going to be a big change at the middle school that we are very excited about with a four-period lunch schedule. The middle school is by far the place where we struggle the most, to serve kids in a timely manner so that most of their lunch period can be spent eating their lunch and consuming all this great fresh produce and fruits and vegetables. So, we think the four-period lunch schedule is fantastic, and we're excited to be able to hopefully serve more students because of that, because there will be a lot less time waiting in line. Again, next year, we have the implementation of the new breakfast regulations. Again, we've really started to, for the most part, implement those this year. So, and again, we've seen an increase in our breakfast participation. So, I don't think that'll be huge, or frightening, or scary for anyone. The competitive foods and all of the à la carte products that we talked about, the comment period for the proposed competitive foods rule has closed. It closed actually on April ninth, but they're not in final form yet. So, the USDA is trying to push it so that they are in final form by next school year. But we'll stay tuned. We'll see how that goes. The, one thing about the competitive foods rule that I just wanted to mention is it really pretty much mirrors the Healthier U.S. School Challenge for all practical purposes. So, again, we would have to, I'm not going to say that we wouldn't have to make changes. There's a few changes we would have to make, but they're not huge. And certainly, many of the products that we currently have, and anytime we evaluate new products, we try to put them through that litmus test on whether or not they would qualify for the Healthier U.S. School Challenge guidelines at the secondary level. So, for the budget, and Val sitting behind me, I have heard a thing for helping me with all these slides from all of our line items and getting to this point. But basically, the increased revenue, whenever you have an increased meal price, you know, the best-case scenario is that the revenue will stay flat. And so, basically, that's what I predicted it as. So, there's a slight increase in the revenue line because of that, and because of the estimated increase in breakfast participation again next year. So, and then, the net change, the hundred and forty thousand dollar loss would actually be, again, the high school remodel. So, drawing down the fund balance that we currently have. The expenditures, again, we have an agreement that's in place with our entire staff. They're fantastic. And that's the proposed labor plan based on that agreement, and the increases in wages for them, as well as any benefit increased amounts from Molly and Matt. And the plan for those numbers. Purchase services, you'll see that upswing a little bit, again, because we have the architects that are working on the high school project with us. So, that's a little bit more than. And quite frankly, the cost of food and supplies just continues to climb. And I'm looking outside at the weather, and all I can think of is always, you know, about the cost, and how much it's going to impact the cost, and the growing season, and so on and so forth. But the cost of food has been increasing by, you know, five to ten percent, depending on the item, for a while now. And so, that pretty much texts about that. And then, we discussed the revenue already for the budget. I just wanted to show you a few other things, because one of the things we purchased this year and are piloting at Greenville Park, because actually Keith Nahava and I were having a discussion about it when I was at Greenville Park doing a visit. And we're, we purchased this recycling cart, and this is a custom-made cart. And I don't know if you've been in the elementary schools lately, as they struggle and try to do the recycling and the composting and the garbage in a way that children can understand, and doesn't, you know, require four tables being set up every lunch, and just a conglomerate of equipment. And so, you know, I think it's working really well, actually. And we can take a look at the budget and how we end this year to see if we can actually implement this strategy at the other two elementary schools would be great, because the sooner we start training the students, then as we, you know, finally get the the students, then as we, you know, finally get the cart at middle school, the following year, high school, a couple of them, then I mean, everybody will know this system and the system won't change and I'll just be, you know, hopefully less masks for the custodians and just a win-win for everyone and much easier to understand than trying to have a separate sign and next to a garbage can. So I just wanted to show you that. Then I just wanted to talk about, these are two of my managers, one of whom. Daughter Audrey Green was mentioned in the Fuel Up to Play sixty recognition, Cece Green and then Arlette Nelson and then Kevin Dahl, who you all know. And I sent Cece and Arlette to the Minnesota School Nutrition Association's Day at the Hill. To really talk about our programs, talk about the things that we've implemented and the things that we're doing. And so it's just a good photo op for, for all of you to see them. And then Arlette. Actually knew the other gentleman, the representative from this area. Who, I have my notes here, Representative Fly because Arlette's son, yeah, he was like the Cub Scout leader or something for Arlette's son. So little did I realize, I wish I would have known this before him because they were the perfect two, two send. That they were actually having discussions with people that they had previous relationships with and could really influence. So it was an exciting day for the Minnesota School Nutrition Association to have them there representing us and talking to the folks that they know so well. And then lastly, I just, you know, we are committed to serving the students in the best way possible, that's our job. We want to serve great food, we want to keep it safe, those are our priorities every single day. But we're committed to customer service and I think a perfect example happened this year when Rose Bryson was recognized by Quinn Hanslick at the Northfield Girls Basketball Game as somebody who made a big difference for her in just her daily, everyday life at school. Because she eats at the salad bar, the build your own salad bar and Rose services her every day and asks her how she's doing and, you know, it's the little things and we talked about that all the time, how the big, the little things really are. So it was just, we were proud of Rose, obviously we were proud of the example that she set and proud to talk about it with our entire team that at every level, whether it's elementary or high school, you know, we're really here to get to know the kids, to serve the kids, to help them and to be approachable to them so that they can ask us questions or comments or if they don't like something, that we can get them something else. And so just wanted to mention that. Anyway. That's it.
Thank you Pam. Board members, you have questions or comments? No?
As you move to the fourth. Fourth period lunch schedule at middle school, what is the length of lunch period?
You know what, I haven't seen the final because I think Greg and Jeff are still in the process of working through the specific times, but the last time somebody talked to me about it, it was going to be twenty-two minutes, so I'm not sure if that's still. Do you know Matt?
I think that they are still working on that schedule for next year Noel and the significant difference is that they're going to go from with nine hundred students in three lunches to more than nine hundred students next year over four lunches. So even at the timeframe that they have, it's going to be much easier for those students to get through the line in an acceptable manner and have the time to eat. That is our, with three lunch periods at that building, it has been really a struggle over the last couple of years to be able to serve students and Pam's group has done a great job, they've done everything they can within that timeframe to make that happen. But we're really excited about that four-period lunch because we think it's going to make a big difference for kids and for Pam's staff.
There was a letter to the editor today in the Tribune that says unfortunate that we have nutritious meals for the children, but not enough time to have them to eat it, which made sense, so that was part of the reason for the question, thank you.
Julie?
Well, I had one comment and one question and when you were talking about the approval of the men, of the menus. You just sort of said, oh, we got them all approved, but I wanted to just point out how well our district does and thanks to you, when I was at one of the US Challenge Silver Award presentations, I was talking to the representative from the Minnesota Department of Ed and she said at that time, there were over two hundred districts that still didn't even have menus approved. So that's how far ahead, you know, we are thanks to your efforts. I mean, that's huge, two hundred districts not even getting that piece of it done. So you just made that comment, yeah, we got them all approved, but it, it was a significant effort and, and really speaks to how encompassing, you know, everything you do is in terms of following all the regulations, et cetera, that's not easy, so congratulations on that. Along those lines, one of my questions was of all the new federal regulations, what are the most challenging for you to implement?
Well, you know, I think they came out at the end of December and lifted the meat alternate. Strict requirement and also the grain requirement at the high school level. And that was certainly not as bad for me, but it was, it was challenging. I mean, for larger districts that purchase a year in advance and have truckloads of a certain pizza or chicken purchased that no longer, you know, it just didn't work, you know, they couldn't, you know, not use that product that was perfectly great. We thankfully don't purchase in truckload volume like Minneapolis and St. Paul, but it was still difficult with some of the products that are popular, the kids really like to work within, to balance the days. So if you went over on a day to have a lighter day and to not have them feeling so hungry at the end, you know, looking at the menu and trying to figure out, alright, you know, if I ate this and it's a hundred less calories, am I still going to be full and, you know, trying to put, I guess, highly popular sides with any days that we had to drop the protein requirement to balance out another day. And it did, you know, in a sense with the new regulations, it did become like a math problem and that's okay in my case because I like math and last time I checked, I'm doing alright with the math thing, but. You know, it, it took a little bit of the fun and creativity out of menus and also, you know, it just did to, I think that the whole concept of a cycle menu is actually better for everybody. It's better from the people that you purchase food for and, you know, it's better for the kids, it's predictable, but it does take away that element of just that fantastic new product that you just want to try and, you know, so.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Anne?
I just want to thank you also for the infrastructure you put into place here in Nursefield and, you know, I, I love that little compost area with the trash and the compost and, and how environmentally friendly this is, has become and how the students are engaged in, you know, putting everything in the right place and composting and also the new equipment you've bought over the years to keep our food fresh and our, you've done a lot.
Thank you. You know, that's what we're always certainly striving to be better tomorrow than we were today and so you, you can't do that all at once, you have to set up a plan based on your priorities and, you know, to the extent, some extent, we've done a good job with that, you know, we probably, hindsight always serves you better, probably could have done a few additional things, but.
We want a list.
Yes.
Other, Carrie?
I've seen the healthy snack cart at the elementary schools and I'm wondering how the, and maybe you said this and I didn't catch it, but how the free and reduced lunch students participate with the snack cart, just how that works.
Actually Nancy, she left, but she had a question about that as well. The healthy snack cart is really, it's a service to parents. We try to do it as close to cost as we can to keep the price as low as possible so that people want to take advantage of the opportunity for their kids. But it is not covered by the educational benefits program that offers a free breakfast and a free lunch, it's completely separate from that. Now, as far as some ideas that have been thrown out there, you know, possibly asking, we do have an angel account fund that both parents and just members of the community contribute to for each school. So, but it's usually not vast amounts of dollars, but it was certainly, that would be one source to look at or the idea was thrown out about possibly partnering in, you know, certain specific student cases with the United Way for funded, you know, the snack cart was sixty-five dollars for the entire year. And so. You know, I guess we would be looking for other options if anybody can think of them as, as it relates to that because right now they would have to purchase it just like somebody who did not qualify for educational benefits.
So, so families sign up for that at the beginning of the year?
They do, there's two sign up time periods, the beginning of the year and then at the end of January for the remainder of the year. So maybe they started out the school year, they didn't want to sign up for, you know, for one reason or another, they just didn't think it was good and then their child typically, you know, would be like saying, I want to be a part of the snack program. So then they can sign up to be part of it in January.
Okay, thank you. Val?
One of the most hilarious things I ever read was this USDA regulation on how you deal with tofu in school lunches because if it's substituting something that looks like a meat, you count it as a protein, but if it's substituting something like ice cream or yogurt, it doesn't count as a protein. And as the father of a vegetarian, I'm just wondering how you deal with providing a variety of protein for vegetarians when even the government will not allow you to count some things as protein even though they are.
One of the things that we've tried to do because actually that's one of the first things I heard when I got here, actually more frequently than other things were students who were choosing to select a vegetarian diet. And so we really do try to make that available to them besides the build, build your own salad entree option that's fantastic at the high school. And we want to implement that next year now that middle school will have the four lunch periods, we'll implement that same concept now at the middle school. But besides that, normally like if we have a pasta item, like spaghetti and meatballs, I mean, we always have marinara sauce that's completely separate from the meatballs and, you know, so that certainly would be an option or cheese tortellini with the marinara sauce and then the cheese provides the protein. And. Always looking, you know, we have hummus and pita right now and that's à la carte, but we can do hummus on a wrap in the sub area at the high school again and we want to do that in a wrap at the middle school as well next year. So provide a protein source there. We're, you know, we're always interested in hearing from students on what they're, what they would like to see, you know, because everybody, there's so many different vegetarian diets and some people, you know, they, they narrow down and then they go a lot broader. We always have egg at the salad bar as well as a protein source every day. We have cottage cheese, we have yogurt.
Other questions?
Ellen, can I just, I just want to compliment Pam, I, in my years of education, I've worked with many food service directors because I like to eat and. Pam is, is really doing a number, she's highlighted some things for you tonight, but there's a couple of pieces that I think we should highlight too, she's looking to reach out to as many students as she can. And so she saw that our district office store has a significant amount of foot traffic in the morning from students, she saw an opportunity. So she now has a grab and go breakfast allows those kids who are coming in, they don't have to go to the cab because those kids have planned it, you know, they're coming in that door and that has been very popular. And again, the commitment to customer service, if you walk in that door any morning and the food service staff, the child nutrition staff is there, they're, they're greeting students, smiling, welcoming them, really it's a very positive thing more than just the food. I think we should also compliment Pam on her work with her budget. If you think about the opportunity for within the food service budget itself, which is separate from other parts, to be able to do a significant upgrade in one of her areas, that's really not a common thing in many schools and yet she still has more than the recommended amount of fund balance. So that takes planning and dealing with the incredibly complex compliance regulations that are put forth by the feds, this is a winner on all levels and Pam deserves all the credit, so very well done.
Thank you. Thank you so much Pam. And congratulations again in the Silver Award.
Yeah, thanks.
Alright, board members, we are ready to move on to our third item, which is the non-operating fund budget, which I believe Val is going to be presenting for us.
Mine's not nearly as exciting, so I apologize. Alright, so I'm going to be reviewing the debt service and the fiduciary fund budgets that we're proposing for the thirteen fourteen school year. First, I'm going to do the debt service and just as a recap. The debt service receives basically all of its revenue from the levy. We're required to levy a hundred and five percent of our debt payments and almost all of our debt is voter approved. We do have two outstanding issues that are capital facility bonds, which is just a direct reduction of our capital, operating capital revenue. And then expenditures are really just for the principal and interest payments and then any service fees that might be associated with the debt, so. Pretty straightforward for the most part, pretty restrictive. This is just a schedule of what we're anticipating for the thirteen fourteen school year for principal and interest payments. You can see the original issue, what it was for and all that good stuff. So. For the revenue. We are comparing, you know, our twenty twelve actual results to our current budget for the twelve thirteen school year and then what we're anticipating for the thirteen fourteen school year. And as I mentioned, the property tax levy is our most significant source of revenue. The interest is really just a combination of what is earned in the pooled cash account and then the amount that we earn on our escrow with our refunding bond that we did for twenty twelve. I just left it static because it's really difficult to estimate the change in market value on our escrow account, so just to be consistent. I just left that the same. And then the state of Minnesota is just our tax credits that we receive. And as far as I know, we're not currently planning any refundings for the thirteen fourteen school year, you can see the, the amounts from the previous years that we did, but we're always obviously looking for opportunities to do that to save the taxpayers money, so. For the expenditures, you know, the detail in slide two is shown here in the principal and interest payment totals that we're projecting. The other debt service fees is dramatically reduced because really the only time it's going to increase significantly is when we do have those refundings which we had in the previous years, so. Significant decline in that and then the other refundings. You can see as the other uses there coming up with our total expenditures, so. So when you put it all together, you can see on the top, the revenues and expenditures and net change is pretty consistent from year to year and that's as you would expect. They have declined slightly and this is a direct result of the refundings we've done. We're saving the taxpayers money there and you can see that in, in both of those, we're owing less and taking in less, so. With the refundings, GAZRI requires us to isolate the other sources and uses, you can see them down in that second section. Basically, the idea behind this is so you can see on the top what's normal operating and then the kind of one-time transactions that can really skew your balances, so you can easily identify those, so. Just as a refresher, you know, when we do the bond refundings, basically we bring in the revenue for the new bond, which is the other sources. And then we pay that out for the, to pay off the old bond, which is the use, so that's where those large numbers come in. And we have typically been doing advanced refundings, which basically means the payoff or the use of the funds doesn't happen until a later date, so that's why it doesn't necessarily line up as a, as a direct in and out each year. So in the thirteen fourteen column, the ending fund balance, you can see it's dramatic- So in the thirteen-fourteen column, um, the ending fund balance, you can see is dramatically lower than what we've had in the previous years. And while this, um, looks extremely low, it's actually the norm because of the great interest rate environment. We've done advanced refundings every year since 2010. And really what the refundings allow us to do is to show appreciation to the community. Because we, as a district, don't really see those savings at all. It's directly tax relief to the taxpayers. And since 2010, we've actually saved about five point six million dollars with the refundings that we've done. So, um, that's a big deal for them to, to be able to see that and, um, you know, prove our stewardship to the district and to the community with that. So. So yeah, by the end of the thirteen-fourteen school year, we should have all the refundings accounted for. And it will return to its normal operating status, um, unless one comes up, a good opportunity comes up for another refunding, um, which we would obviously present to you guys at that time. So. That's pretty much it. So, um, as one of my accounting professors likes to say, we are not boring people. We just like get excited about boring stuff. So. At this time, we welcome any questions you have regarding this boring stuff. So.
Thanks, Val. I don't think saving the taxpayers five point six million dollars is boring.
It's just good stuff. It's good stuff.
Board members, questions?
No.
I just wanted to comment. Thank you for this, uh, report. The saving to the taxpayer is one of those that could really, at this point, slide under the radar from the public, because some of the discussion was several months ago. And the fact that it's now here along with a lot of other stuff in the report. I hope that, uh, the community picks that up, taxpayers pick that up, the deduce work that you're doing. Thank you.
Yep. Other comments or questions? Thank you so much, Val.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, so if you think you can handle one more of my presentations, yep. Excuse me, I'm not even going to touch it.
It's because not only is she a great accountant and finance person, she is still happily wed to PC technology.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Yep, I would definitely probably break that. So, we won't go there. All right, uh, so next I will review the fiduciary fund proposed budget. Otherwise known as our trust or scholarship fund, for those of you who might be more familiar with those terms. Basically, this fund accounts for any gift donation or trust that's awarded to the district. And we track each account separately. So if the donor were to ever come back, we can say, you know, here's what we spent it on, here's how much is left, that sort of thing, um, because that's important to them, um, especially if they have certain restrictions on what the funds can be used for. Um, the high school guidance office coordinates the gift and award process each year. And I work a lot with Lee Thorson, who is phenomenal at keeping it all organized. Um, so I appreciate her efforts each year. Um, and their banquet is actually this coming Sunday. And through the district's gifts that we receive, um, we give out approximately seventy-six scholarships each year from about forty-four donors. Um, and so as someone who's currently paying down student loans, I can say that every scholarship I received was a dollar I didn't have to pay out later, um, with such a wonderful feeling. So the generosity of the community to provide that much for, for the students of the district is just phenomenal. So. The district is the fiscal host for about fifty percent of the scholarships. So not everything I'm showing is the total of, of the scholarships that, um, we do, do get to give out. So. So in the summary, you'll see this fund is extremely consistent from year to year, um, which is great, positive for the kids that are in that way. Um, generally, whatever we bring in for scholarships goes out, um, which is the way it should be. Uh, for the thirteen-fourteen school year, we are anticipating uh, gifts and donations of about fifty thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And then just a small amount of, um, interest earnings on the pooled cash amounts. So. The expenditures are just slightly higher due to, um, a trust that we have that they do scholarships for students to attend specific field trips. And so overall, the fund balance showing a small decline, um, which is what I would expect since the, um, as we have the endowments that we spend down. And then just, uh, informational, this is just a list of the scholarships, um, that we are the fiscal house for and will be providing, um, for the upcoming year. So. Um, at this time, any questions on that? This one's pretty, pretty straightforward. So.
Again, thank you, Val.
Yeah, no problem.
All right. We are on to an item for discussion rather than, um, a report. At the last board meeting, um, on April eighth, you would have, uh, received a, um, overview from, that Julie, um, put together for the board of some questions that she had asked other board chairs of student, um, representatives on a school board. And so the idea, um, is to think about whether now is the time we want to consider having a student voice. And, um, if this is even the, if we want to have a student voice, if this is the mechanism that I think would work in Northfield. So I thought, um, you've had a little bit of time to review what Julie had put together. And I thought what we would do is just discuss the idea of student voice, what we think might be some of the strengths and challenges, um, if there's additional questions, um, to Julie about what she found out. And just kind of get a, get a sense of the board's temperature as to whether this is something we want to consider a, um, going forward in any way, shape or form, or not. So. I guess maybe, um, Julie, if there's a couple of pieces that you want to highlight, and then we'll open it up to discussion.
I think basically summarizing what, again, what I had, um, sort of expressed at the last meeting was that, you know, the districts I did contact, again, Hopkins, Burnsville, Eagan Savage, Faribault and Austin. And, um, of all those districts, they all had positive experiences having a student voice on their board. Um, I think the one, um, thing that they all stressed is, and, and what we'll hope to discuss tonight is just sort of the structure, um, the qualifications, some of the, um, roles and responsibilities, and having that really well defined. And, and that's really key to making it successful. So I think those are some of the things that we have to talk about in terms of the challenges that we would have in terms of putting that together to where we feel like that was, um, we're setting it up and we're setting that person, that student up to be successful and that we're going to get the kind of feedback that we want. And then secondly, they, um, uh, two of the boards, uh, board chairs had encouraged us to also develop a qualifications type piece. Um, now I have reached out to a couple of districts and asked for some of their information specifically in terms of how they put that together. And, um, that will be forthcoming if, if we choose to, you know, after discussion tonight, proceed in that way. Uh, we could have that information just sort of as a starting point as well.
Thanks, Julie. So, board members, thoughts? John, go ahead.
Do you have a, an idea as to how this student would be selected? And, uh, who, who would do this election? Would be elected from the student body? Or are we to select the student? Or what's the, uh, what's the idea?
Yeah, sure. That's a really good question and one that I, that I did ask, um, because I think that's obviously key in terms of how you, how you select that person. And there was a common thread that ran through all the districts. And that was they reached out to the, um, student council in the building and that student council faculty member along with administrators. And in some cases, they chose that student right from the student council membership. And in other cases, one other case, the student council membership, um, sort of discussed who they thought might be an ideal candidate, um, and with oversight of administrators, whether it be the faculty advisor for student council or principals and, and faculty. So, so that was how they really, they chose that person from that pool.
And Julie, just so I understand what you're saying, when you're saying they chose, who is it that makes that, that selection? Is it the board as a whole, or is it a committee, or is it some representative of school administration?
Basically, what they did is, is the faculty advisor, in, in most, in all of the cases, the faculty advisor or the principal of the building, basically went to student council to determine among their membership who is interested in serving. So typically, that student rep came out of the student council membership. Now, in one case, the school board actually approved the appointee. And in the other cases, they did not. They, the, the student was just chosen without board approval.
And would there be an expectation that the student would serve during the summer months as well, or?
Um, you know, Hopkins had the most, um, defined, um, structure in terms of roles and responsibilities. They even got to the point where saying they only had to stay for an hour of any given stu, uh, board meeting, the first hour. One of the districts did not have them serve in the summer. So, you know, it's set up in a variety of ways, but I think those are issues that we would have to look at and that we could define in terms of roles and responsibilities, um, for attendance.
One thing that I've been kind of wondering in my head is whether we have students that were that interested. I know we had a letter from one of the, um, ninth graders who was in, um, Mr. Fowler's class. But I, um, the mayor's youth council were selecting applicants this weekend. And I asked Ian, you know, did you have very many? And he said there were over fifty applications for the mayor's youth council. So I think there might be a level of interest in students and, and that, that council is set up to kind of inform the city of events and to have students be active, an active voice in, um, the community. So it seems like that, if that's an indicator of student interest, that there might be student interest beyond just the person who wrote us. So. Carrie?
I'm just having a couple of thoughts that aren't necessarily, um, logically connected. One is that, you know, we have typically, I think, um, a lot of students in Northfield are just terribly, terribly overbooked already. And so, um, you know, I think about even having students come and present on something, um, it's difficult to, for them to find time to come. And so, um, you know, I think to find a student who is willing to, to commit to the kind of time that, that a board requires, uh, I, I think, I think there's a challenge there. The, the other thing I'm thinking about is, you know, what we want to accomplish from having a student voice on the board, I think is to have student input on the schools, which, you know, are all about students. And so I'm wondering if there might be alternative vehicles to having a student board representative, maybe working with the youth council or the student council, or, or something to, um, be more intentional about how we reach out to inform students of things that we're considering, or, um, you know, some other process that, that might, um, maybe more effectively accomplish the goal of hearing from more student voices on topics that are of interest to us in a way that wouldn't put all that on us on one particular student who, um, if, if we could even find a student who would take that, that whole responsibility on. So, that's.
Yeah, I was thinking about, if, board members, if you were at the, with the rally, did the focus groups where we could come and listen to the students? And that gave us this broad, um, section of students and, and issues that had been defined by, I think, the healthy community and should have led that. So I don't know if that's more like what you were thinking about, some sort of, um, and that was in the school day. So it wasn't, it was easy for students.
Yeah. I'm, I'm even thinking more just, just how we, um, you know, instead of just throwing the agenda or the minutes up on the web, but we really, um, have some kind of push out to student groups so they know topics that are coming up and, um, have an opportunity to, you know, a wider group of students be made aware. But, you know, that we're really intentional in how we're pushing out that information. I mean, they're not listening to KYMN. They're probably not reading the Northfield news unless they have some idea that their name might be in the paper that week, you know?
Yeah.
Or picture.
But, but I think there might be ways for us to, to reach out more to, to students more intentionally.
No?
I think for about a period of maybe eight years, this was done. Probably maybe in the seventies. Little history lesson here. And let me say, if it was for ten years, um, there were, I believe they were appointed from, or selected from the student council, if I remember correctly. And, uh, a certain number of them were on task, ready to go, listened, contributed, excited. And there were a few of them that sort of relaxed a little bit at the meeting. And sometimes you had to do like this. And so they were, like, with, you know, and we kind of took turns with each other. We had one who was absolutely outstanding. He was, his goal was as a senior to go into public service. He's an extremely successful lawyer up in the city right now. And, uh, I spoke to his parents recently. He said, I, I, because we were talking about that, I said, what was the experience? He said, it was just phenomenal. So I think it's really across the whole map, depending on where they are. Yeah, I'm sure you'll get some that'll be, be pretty comfortable with the board meeting, and others are going to really be overt. And, uh, I think that's part of being a sixteen-year-old or an eighteen-year-old, or whatever age kids are when they are in high school, graduate.
Ian?
Julie, as you did your research, did you, um, did you come across any problematic stories?
Um, actually, there was one district, and, and he was, um, pretty candid in talking about the board's weakness really in developing the student rep position in that they really didn't have clearly defined roles and responsibilities. And he said, I find, you know, we probably have done a disservice to that student because we haven't clearly defined why, why they are there, nor does the board know why they are there. So consequently, that person really doesn't contribute. If asked, they will. So again, I think that just really highlights the need to really, for us as a board, understand, and Carrie's point is exactly right, what really do we want to hear from students? And what's the best way for us to do it? And whether or not that's, um, as a, as having a student on the board or not. But that if you do that, no matter what structure, we really have to say, what do we want to know? And how are we gonna, how are we gonna get that information and clearly communicate that to the students? Here's what we want to hear, and here's how we want to hear it. And in the case of this board that hadn't done that, really that, that student voice is not being heard, nor is it effective. So, um, you know, it, it's a really good example of how we do have to set this up and, and really know very intentionally what you want from it, or you're not going to get that. And, and I guess I really agree with Carrie, because one thing that I heard from all those districts when I said, is there some sort of formal vehicle in place for that student to go back to communicate to the student body? And there wasn't. It was, oh, they just have oral reports at a student council meeting. So, so really that person is sitting here and, and hearing the issues at a board meeting. But is there a formal process in place for them to communicate that back? And that's exactly what you're saying too. Nor was there a process in place for them to gain the student perspective prior to coming to the board meeting to say, you know, certainly we're going to share their own. But, but how does the student body at large sort of weigh in with that person so that they are being an effective communicator of student issues? So, so while I think, um, you know, Carrie's points are, are, are right on about that. And I totally agree with you on that for sure. Yeah.
No?
Again, a couple of things. That, that was something that I had forgotten about. But the preparation and the training and the reporting back wasn't, uh, as concise as it could have been or as clear as it could have been for the students. So they sort of had to make it up as they went. And some were very good at it, some aren't. We had one student who apparently was annoying to the student council because, uh, in penalty for his annoyance, he was assigned to ten months of the, of duty with the school board. It's not, wasn't a good example.
We don't want to be a punishment.
No.
No, I also would add, the, they generally came for one hour or, or a period of time. You know, they looked at the agenda and they said, you know, once we get past the, the sort of the presentation stuff, then we'll go back to do my studies and whatever else I need to do for tomorrow. So they didn't stay for a little board meeting. So they didn't stay for a little board meeting, but they were there for the beginning.
So the one thing I've been thinking about with this too is watching some of the things that have gone on in the Twin Cities. And I would hate to have Facebook be the only way that they feel like they could get the board's attention on an issue. And we've seen that kind of play out in the Twin Cities too. So I guess, I really thought we should think about, and I don't, and I totally agree with you, Carrie. Your points are well taken. This is, I'm not sure if this is the right fit for Northfield doing it in this manner, but it seems like putting some more thought into that, is there a mechanism for a way to reach out or inform on a, you know, more structured or on a more frequent basis to students? And have that be an opportunity in some ways for them to have their voice here, here, and have for them to understand what's happening. So.
I would just sort of follow on what Carrie said, that I think, you know, what we should do is, is really focus on what is the goal and how, how do we best achieve it? And is having a non-voting member of the board, who's really then a member of the board in title only, the best way to achieve it. I mean, a lot of the criticisms of the student member could be said about any of us at any time, but.
Speaking of yourself, John.
I think the function, the issue is, what's, what's the goal and how do we achieve it? And is having somebody who doesn't have a vote, who's supposed to sit here at the meetings, be the best way to achieve it. And I'm not sure that it is, but I guess I don't know that it isn't either.
I guess the only other thing I'd share with you is I have made contact with Mr. Fowler, and I'm scheduled to go in starting tomorrow with the fifth hour class, which is where the majority of the, of the dozen or so letters that I got, which talked about everything from snow days to staff in terms of concerns about faculty evaluation, to dress for girls and boys in track and what was appropriate. So I'm going to go in and just share a little bit about my sense on each of those items and give them a chance to kind of talk about those pieces. Again, it's, it's not the same as having them come and be with the board, but I guess I thought it was really important since they'd taken the time to write the letters. But as I'd shared with you before, all of the students, including the one that wrote you guys, in terms of the, of this board position, are all individuals that this was given as an assignment in their sixth class. And so, you know, they're practicing being able to write a respectful letter to either a board or a commission or to an administrator to ask about and try to get some information about and maybe convey, you know, questions or thoughts or whatever across the board. So I know that that's part of the, of the work that came out of this. I know, at the same time, I know that when we checked with, with Mr. Fowler concerning the young lady that wrote the piece, it was indicated that she was very much interested in seeing if there was the potential to add that voice. So I, the students will have a chance to talk about each of the pieces that they have concerns about. But I would just echo, I think, going forward with this, it's going to be very important that you, if you're going to do this, that you think very carefully about how it's implemented, that it becomes something other than just, it's a placeholder or something I can put on my, you know, college resume or whatever. And you need to think about the feedback on both sides. How does that person share information with you? How do they gather information from students? How do they share information back to students? Because if it's really going to be something that has a worthwhile purpose, all of those kind of communication pieces need to be in place. And it kind of sounds a little like when it was done before, it was much more laissez-faire in terms of how much structure there really was in the process.
I would, if I may, add one other comment to what John said. I don't recall, in fact, I'm positive of this, they did not have a vote.
They can't have a vote.
Didn't have a vote.
It's not like the only people that can vote on the school board are elected.
I would presume.
School board members.
And they oftentimes were reticent to express a strong opinion because they felt that they were pretty much in a spotlight when they did. They were careful about that.
It's just the trash.
Other thoughts? Julie?
Well, I think we've had, we have some track record of going out and looking for student inputting, having it be successful as a district. So I think if we can build on that, you know, in the, in the case of budget cuts, where we've had kids on those committees. And we've certainly seen these kids come forward when there's issues, and they really speak eloquently and give us great perspective. And, and, you know, we're always enlightened by what they say. So, so I agree. I think that student voice is extremely important. And, but how do you get it from a broader perspective than one person sitting here who may or may not have the opportunity to really get a sense for how the collective student body is feeling? So I think that's really the challenge.
Well, and, you know, I guess if the goal is getting information to the students, certainly there's lots of ways to do that other than having a person sitting here. So I think, again, it's still focusing on what is it we're trying to achieve? And making sure we understand what it is we're trying to do before we go to this model of having a non-voting representative on the board.
So it sounds like, if I'm, just to summarize, it sounds like board members, you know, see the value of having a student voice, but that it was really helpful to have Julie's kind of research to see really what the limitations of this might be and the challenges and whether that would bring us the kind of goals that we, we would want for this. So what I'm wondering is if instead of going forward with this sort of model, if we want to think about the next, maybe bigger issue where we think that having some sort of, reaching out to students in some way would be really helpful? And as thoughtfully as a board may be considering, and it, I'm not sure what, what's going to be coming forward out of maybe the calendar's discussion, or there might be another piece that comes forward as, as we move into the next, into this year, but maybe that would be an opportunity to really think about, how do we want to reach out to students? And how do we want to get, as Julie was saying, maybe more of a broader cross-section of students' opinion? And also make sure that students are understanding how whatever we're considering might play out? And maybe that, it sounds like we're all sort of open to trying to figure out a way to have that student voice, but think about it a little more intentionally in terms of this goal. Is that, am I hearing what, what people are saying? Is there something else that anyone wants to add? Or in terms of a direction going forward? Well, we weren't going to vote on anything, but I just wanted to have a discussion, and I really appreciated Julie's following up. And I thought it's good as a board to, to think about this in a, in a more formal way and consider it. So, great. All right. We are ready to move on to our first item for individual action. And I remind board members, there was a slight correction in your table file on this item for individual action. So that's the resolution for termination and non-renewal probationary licensed staff. And the correction had to do with the, it's the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen school year rather than two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen school year. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution? Moved by Julie, seconded by Noel. Any discussion? And this is a resolution, so this is a roll call vote?
Correct.
Fassa?
Aye.
Maple?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Scranton?
Aye.
And Iberso?
Aye.
Our second item for action is the audit engagement letter. And Val is recommending the approval of Clifton, Larson, Allen, and you have their full letter as part of your board packet. So the superintendent's recommendation is a motion to accept the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen engagement letter. And Clifton, Larson, Allen is who we've engaged with in the past. Moved by Carrie? Seconded by Ann. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we're ready to move on to our consent grouping. And board members, I'll remind you that there were a few additional personnel items in your table file to add to that consent grouping. Is there anything anyone wishes to pull from the consent grouping? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? So moved. Moved by Ann? Seconded by Carrie? All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We are ready for the item for information, which is a reminder about the calendar community conversation. Dr. Richardson, do you have a?
Yes, just, just a couple of things. Again, basically, the final conversation will be Tuesday, April the thirtieth, from seven to nine o'clock PM in the high school upper cafeteria. What we're going to be doing at that particular session is having an opportunity to do some review of the straw poll results that were done as part of our public engagement process. And then really to focus in on taking a look at what we call seven skeletal or concept calendars. And the idea being that these calendars were created based on the ideas that came out of the discussion and the elements that people identified in terms of calendars. So they really look at things in terms of length of the school year. They look at length of the school day. They look at, do we extend the school year out beyond the current piece? Do we look at a year-round type forty-five, fifteen calendar? Do we stay with an after-labor day start, but either shorten breaks or leave breaks alone? Or increase breaks? And the idea being that, that we're going to ask the, the groups basically to generate a list of benefits and concerns for each of the calendars. And so each group will do the benefits and concerns for one calendar. Then allow for the opportunity for everybody in the group, in all the participants, to add additional benefits or additional concerns. And then at the end of the session, we're going to ask each individual that's a participant to vote either with a yes or no, saying, we think that this calendar is worthy of further review, development, potentially creating actually an actual calendar with dates and all the other pieces. And the idea being then that as a board, what you'll get at the first board meeting in May will be feedback from the conversations that basically says, here's the seven calendars, here's the benefits and the concerns for each of those calendar types. And a vote saying, this is the number of people that said, yes, we think this is worthy of further consideration, or no, this isn't. Obviously, the board is the, is the final determiner as to whether we move forward with further analysis and development of calendars. And we also know that when we get ready to do that, we need to be more deliberate in terms of making sure that if we have a task force that's working on calendar options, that that task force represents the broad spectrum of the community. Because remember in the calendar conversations, it was just the people who were kind enough to show up. And so we, we know, and actually people have said that as part of the discussion, that they see there, there are groups within the community that just aren't there. And so I, I think it does make a lot of sense to, to come back and take that step. Our hope is that by doing this, you'll be able to get a better handle on which calendars people just have no interest in pursuing and would like to, basically what the votes tell you, don't look at this one anymore, and those where there is some genuine interest. We got back in terms of the straw poll, over three hundred responses. And as Mary and I have looked over those responses, Matt's looked over those responses, people are literally all over the place. From absolutely leave it alone, don't change one single thing, leave it exactly the way it is, to blow it up and start over with something completely different. And then a whole bunch of pieces in the middle. Again, some people saying, I, I want you to start after Labor Day, but I'm fine with going farther into June, if that makes sense to you. Some that are saying, you really need to tighten up on the, on the breaks and take as, as many of the break days out. Start after Labor Day and get us done as soon as possible. And don't waste our time with these other pieces because we'd rather have just one block of time when we have to worry about daycare and other kinds of options for kids. We have others that are saying, no, we really want to see all the different ways that we could stretch this out. And they want to see options where students have, have more regular kinds of breaks throughout the year and yet have a shortened summer so that they don't end up with as much in terms of the summer slide. So I, our hope is that the discussion we have, and I know Mary will do a wonderful job facilitating it as she's done with the first two, but that's what we're really aiming to do, is to really have people take the information and take really all the data that's been developed and collected over the last ten weeks, and really try to kind of put it into some thought about how would those different calendars actually benefit us? Or would there be problems with them? And I think we will get some, I think, reasonable data back in terms of how people are thinking about each of the calendars. The other piece that we are going to be doing is scheduled for Wednesday night at eight o'clock PM. We are looking at a video conference. And Rob and Evan have been kind enough to volunteer. I think his group had checked in with both of you to volunteer, along with myself and Mary, who didn't volunteer, but were there anyway, and Kathy Galati. And so that we can have a discussion about the process so far. So we're going to be looking at the results of the straw poll. And then we're really going to focus, I hope, in on, in, on some time in terms of kind of talking about what are the key issues around calendar development? And what are key issues around the, the process? And hopefully have a chance to have those discussions. Because I think as, as people look at this, what we'd like to do is to make sure that they have as many different opportunities to find out what the issues are and maybe hear the perspectives from, from different folks in terms of kind of what people are thinking about. This has really been an interesting process and something a little bit different in structure than we've done before. Mary and I have put a lot of time into it in terms of getting, you know, the pieces together. But I do think that the data that you're going to get will hopefully give us some good direction in terms of where we need to go. But the, but if we do decide to do anything but the calendar structure that we currently have in place, I guess I'm saying to you, we, the next group, the task force group, we need to be more focused in terms of making sure that different stakeholder groups are involved with that process. And I'm thinking the reality here immediately is, how do we get some students involved in that process? How do we make sure that members of different communities within our community are involved in this process? So that, that we are, we know that we're getting feedback from a number of different people. But we'd be looking at those again based on your direction as to which of any of the calendars you'd like to have more work done on. So any questions you might have on that? Again, I encourage you to tune in. Some of you will tune in in a whole different way. But it, an opportunity to do that on Wednesday at eight o'clock PM. And then again, next Tuesday, April thirtieth, from seven o'clock to nine o'clock, where we'll be meeting in the upper cap of the high school to really break those calendars down that are kind of the skeletal. We, we did go a little overboard in terms of the, you know, we just talked about calendar, skeletal calendars, then we talked about putting flesh on the calendar, you know? But, but we're getting to flesh, that's, that's when you actually flesh out the pure design and the actual dates and whatever. We're not really ready to do that because we just need to find out if people have interest in some of the different alternatives that are out there. But I, I guess I hope that people will see this as a way for us to get some good feedback from the folks that have been kind enough to spend time with us over the past two meetings. And that they will get a chance to give us some good feedback as to how they feel about each of the calendars. Any questions or thoughts?
I guess I was going to just touch on the panel discussion.
Yes.
It came up very quickly. I just talked to Greg yesterday. And I want to clarify for board members that we, Rob and I are not speaking for the board. You know, we haven't even had a discussion as a board on. You know, we haven't even had a discussion as a board on this. That when, in talking to Griff, this is a way to try to engage the community in another, another way. And, um, we can reflect on what maybe we've heard and have seen. But, um, I, I just want to assure the board members that we aren't trying to jump the gun on this. This is just trying to engage the community in professionalism. And Griff has been really active in trying to help us think about different ways that we can do that, so.
The only other individual we're not sure of at this point is, I know there has been an ask of a teacher. And, but I don't believe that there's been a decision yet on the part of that teacher as to whether they're going to participate or not. But again, I think he was looking for people from a variety, different kind of perspectives, so I think that's a good thing.
And Griff asked me on Friday, and I said, you know, it was the, he asked me before, he asked Ellen, and I said, I didn't want to do it unless there was at least one other. I mean, short of a quorum, I wanted at least another board member, so it didn't seem like I was, like, grandstanding or something. So I said, you know, ask Ellen or somebody who's comfortable.
I'm having this vision of this thing as kind of like the Brady Bunch thing with Griff in the middle, but. That, that was a little scary, so I kind of stayed away from that, so.
Carrie?
Um, I, I just wanted, um, you did say this, but I just want to clarify that, that at that meeting on the thirtieth, the, the folks who come will not be actually looking at actual calendars, but more sort of calendar concepts. And when we say skeletal calendar, we're, we're talking about sort of very broad parameters like traditional calendar, post-Labor Day start, out the first week of June, or the forty-five, fifteen, but we're not looking at actual dates.
Yeah, the, the, and you're right, the, the detail is only about that, it's about that concise. So like for the current calendar we have right now, it would be traditional, one hundred and seventy-four days, after Labor Day start, early June end. There are no contract issues, and it requires no waiver from MDE.
Just so people understand, they're not, they're not.
So, you know, the, we, we won't be looking at calendars that say, it ends on June thirteenth, or it ends on June first, or whatever. But it's the idea of helping us to get a sense of, um, kind of where people are. Because what we have heard from folks as they've been talking about this is, you know, our, in some cases, it's, I really don't want to have anything in August. I really think that's the month we need to, to, to kind of hold, you know, as a vacation month. But I'm, I'm not, I'm not upset about the idea of maybe you go longer in June. And again, those people are going to be those that are saying, I really would like to see maybe vacation spread out. Or I might like to see a J-term in June, where we do, you know, a couple of shorter terms that match the requirements in state law. And then do a J-term that gives us an opportunity to maybe have students taking one class or a couple of classes per month at the end. Um, not totally unlike what a program like Arcadia does, where they do kind of a, a J-term at the end of their school year, where they do a, almost an independent study-type project, or they go as a group and do an activity. So I thi, I think the, the nice thing about this is it really has gotten people to kind of think outside of multiple boxes in terms of what's there. And, um, hopefully will give us some good feedback in terms of what people are thinking.
All right, Kay? Okay, future meetings beyond our April thirtieth, we are having, uh, the community conversation, which is not a board meeting. We have a meeting on May thirteenth. And then I will remind board members that our second meeting in May is actually a Tuesday because of the Memorial Day holiday, and that's Tuesday, May twenty-eighth. With that, I would ask for a motion for adjournment. Moved by Noel?
Seconded.
Seconded by John. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any adjournments?